Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 5 meeting of the Bellingham City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. But before we go any further, I would like to take a moment for a member of our community who passed away this morning. Some of you know Mr. Bill Disler. Bill Disler served his country as a Vietnam veteran, and then after the war, he served it as a peace advocate. I'd like to give a quote by Mr. Disler, and then a moment of silence, please. He said, "I do believe things will get better. Maybe I'm naive, but I really believe that if we all keep trying and doing what we can do, change will happen." Please join me. Two announcements. On Tuesday, June 13, that's coming up very soon, the Bellingham City Council will host a town hall meeting, the first of its kind, and the topic we've chosen is housing. The event will take place at the Bellingham High School Auditorium, which is located on 2020 Cornwall Avenue, from 6:30 to 8:30, and the doors will open half hour before that at 6 o'clock. We'll start out with a panel discussion that will be followed by time for members of the public to offer their ideas and potential solutions on our housing issues. The next day, on Wednesday, June 14, at noon here at City Hall, we will host a flag-raising ceremony for the newly adopted Bellingham flag, right out here in front at the City Hall Flag Plaza. And then afterwards, the ceremony will be followed by an open house in the new offices for the City Council, which is right down this hall on the second floor. We just moved in there recently. Our offices are now located there, along with that of the hearing examiner. Please come and join us right after the flag-raising ceremony. And then finally, coming up next month, on Monday, July 10, at 7:00 p.m. here in City Council chambers, we will host a public hearing on amendments to the comprehensive plan, in particular to the Cordada neighborhood plan. Would you please now all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jane Knutson.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Borneman.
Here.
Okay, thank you. So, we are going to begin the evening with two public hearings, and our usual procedures to have the public hearings, then we'll follow that by the 15-minute public comment period. We have a number of people signed up for the 15-minute public comment period, but first we're going to have two hearings. Each of these may take a little while. Please be patient with us. Mr. Sepler, are we going to handle them each separately individually, or combine them in some way?
We will handle them separately.
Okay.
Two different staff reports.
Okay. So, the first one is a public hearing to consider a comprehensive plan amendment to the Barclay neighborhood plan, a rezone a portion of the property located within Area 1 from residential single, its current zoning to commercial planned. I see Mr. Moshe Quinn is here. Do you want to start, though?
I'll start. Members of the council, good evening. We come before you to present the Planning Commission's recommendation on this proposed amendment, and also to give you background, our planner, as he calls up the file, will present background on the application for comp plan amendment. As council is aware, comp plan amendments are bundled, considered in a docket, are subject to review at the Planning Commission as well as council. Should this be acted on, this would amend our comprehensive plan, and specifically the land use and map shown on the, I think it's the official land use map contained in the plan.
Good evening. My name is Moshe Quinn. I'm with the Planning Community Development Department, and tonight is a public hearing to consider a request for a rezone for a property located at 3001 East Sunset Drive. So, the property owner had submitted a request in 2017 to rezone a small portion of his property that's located in Area 1 of the Barclay neighborhood, which is highlighted here in red, from residential single to commercial planned. The area is located in the northeast section of the city adjacent to Sunset Drive and just west from Trickle Creek Boulevard. Currently, the applicant owns this whole entire area within Area 27 and this small portion of property here. So, to give you a little bit of background on this, is that the main portion of the applicant's property, that zone commercial plan, was recently annexed in 2016, and the comparable zoning that the city adopted was commercial planned for that area, as they had a vested land use application with the county for a neighborhood city, for a, excuse me, for a neighborhood center, and the city adopted the comparable zoning to that. However, the southwest portion of the property was already in the city in zone residential single, and so that's the 11,000 square foot area, or .25 acres. Therefore, the only way to change that is through a comprehensive plan amendment. Both the Planning Commission and City Council docketed the proposal for review in 2017. Some more background, on January 10, the applicant held neighborhood meeting. No one from the public attended the meeting, and there was no public comment provided. A CEPA non-project determination of nonsignificance was issued on March 3, 2017, and no comment was also submitted regarding that environmental determination. On April 20, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted 7-0 to recommend approval to the council of the proposed rezone. So, the current issue with this is that the main property, as well as the area, has two zoning designations of commercial plan and residential single. It's located in two neighborhood subareas, and having two different zonings and two different subareas really creates inconsistent zoning, as there's different development standards, as well as uses that are allowed within those specific areas, and they conflict with each other a lot of times. So, here is an aerial view of today, and so this right here was the existing city limit line. So, this area was in the city since the early 1900s, and this is the main portion that was annexed in 2016. With this zoning boundary here, when the applicant develops this property and not considering any environmental constraints, he would have additional setbacks of 20 feet from this zone line for buildings, 10 feet for parking, as well as within 100 feet, his building height's limited to 35 feet. So, in the commercial plan zone, the director approves the final building height with the development proposal. So, there's some zoning inconsistencies there. As well as you can see here, this area here is a pipeline easement that goes, it's 50 foot wide, and so it leaves very little area to develop a single-family residential dwelling unit, as the minimum density there is 10,000 square feet in Area 1. Plus, with the additional arterial setback that would be required from Sunset Avenue, leaves a very small footprint, which may also need variances to be approved to build there. However, when this area is combined with the main portion, it provides more development So, staff reviewed this proposal, and the proposal meets the comprehensive plan amendment criteria, as well as a rezone criteria. It also is consistent with the 2016 Bellingham comprehensive plan, as the goals and policies that are listed within your packet. So, the proposal would enable the property owner to develop under a single zoning classification. It corrects an inconsistent zoning boundary, and it simplifies development regulations, improves development options for the property owner, and promotes the efficient use of land. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval of the rezone request, and that concludes my presentation, and I could take any questions that council may have at this time.
Okay. Does council have any questions before we open the meeting? Okay. I did see a sign-up sheet for the public hearing.
Outside.
Was it outside? Moshe, would you mind checking? I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I believe I got this correct one. Yes, we have two people signed up. First, Mr. Gary Pedersen, and then followed by Jeff Kwame. Gary, would you like to come forward?
I thought that was for the next one.
For the next one? You can certainly speak then. Jeff, would you like to come forward?
Yeah, public comment, you can speak then.
Good evening, council. I'm the applicant. My name is Jeff Kwam, and really, I have nothing more to add, other than I go along with the Planning Commission and staff's recommended approval.
That's good. Good job, buddy.
Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, can we turn the volume down a little bit? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring the public hearing to a close, turn it back to the council. Roxanne?
I'll go along with everybody else and move approval.
Second. We have a motion, a second. So, our usual procedure is if there's a hearing and any issues raised, we defer to a work session. I saw no issues being raised. Anybody else? Okay? All those in favor of, sorry, go ahead. Roxanne, April.
I wasn't able to watch the Planning Commission meeting. Did anybody have anything to say there?
I apologize. Yes, one person provided some public testimony in support of the proposal. They had property right across from this rezone area. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of passing this ordinance to adopt a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone of this small portion of property located within Area 1 from residential single to commercial planned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll now go on to the next public hearing, which is also a comprehensive plan amendment. This is to consider a comprehensive plan amendment to the Cordada neighborhood plan, and this would be a rezone a portion of property located within Area 20, which is currently residential, single to industrial planned. Mr. Sepler, would you care to begin this one, too? Or would Ryan like to start?
Similarly, this matter comes to council after a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission. You're familiar with it, because you docketed it after Planning Commission recommended it. It's one that has specific merits, and Ryan will go over the Planning Commission recommendation and the history of the application.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ryan Nelson with the Planning and Community Development Department. I'll be presenting the rezone request for 4260 Pacific Highway this evening. So, the proposed rezone is located in the Cordada neighborhood. This is in the northwestern portion of the city limits, and the proposal is to rezone it from residential single to industrial planned. A little bit of the background on this site, it was annexed into the city in 2013. This is something that City Council has seen before, both the Planning Commission and City Council have docketed this for review under the 2017 work program. On December 15, 2016, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting. One adjacent property owner to the south attended the meeting. They did not express any specific concerns during the meeting, and to date, staff has not received any comment on the proposed rezone. Staff has issued a CEPA non-project determination of nonsignificance in March, and we held a public hearing before the Planning Commission on April 20, where the Planning Commission recommended approval 7-0 to City Council for approval of the proposed rezone. So, issues, the subject site has a few unique components associated with it. One, it is one piece of property that's bisected by zoning, so half of the one piece of property is in residential zoning, the other half is in industrial planned. There's no right-of-way or easement or property boundary, which typically you find between zoning designations. There are limited development opportunities to the subject proposal due to wetlands and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas to the east of the site, and it also has some limited access components from a residential standpoint. And so, this map really does a good job kind of showing what we're looking at here. So, the subject rezone proposal and the developable portion of the property is right about here, and so it's really just a quarter of the subject property. When you look at it, it really is an island surrounded by critical areas. To the east, we have Bear Creek and Wetlands, categories 2 and 3. Down to the south of us, we do have our north and regional stormwater facility, and then north of the site, we have both, two, a public and a private wetland mitigation site. Once we look onto the other portion, the western portion of the subject, or the subject owner, the property owner's property within the industrial zoning designation, there's also a significant portion there that has critical areas and associated buffers on it. And so, from a residential standpoint, we really only have potential for about 15 units on this portion of the property, and when you look at the requirements in order to develop that under residential zoning, they ultimately be required to develop June Road right-of-way through wetland areas, installation of a sewer main throughout that area. So, from staff's perspective, we think that it's very unlikely, from an economic feasibility standpoint, that the subject property would be developed for residential single uses. Therefore, we think it makes a lot more sense to utilize that for industrial purposes, given the limited access components, as well as critical areas ultimately surrounding the subject property. So, staff has reviewed the proposal for consistency with both the comprehensive plan amendment requirements and the rezone requirements under the municipal code, and we do believe that it meets those requirements. The proposal in this case would promote logical expansion of the industrial zoning. It would help encourage economic development and supporting jobs. It would enable the property owner to develop the site under one single zoning classification, which would organize and simplify the development regulations and permitting process for the proposed future development, and it ultimately would maximize efficient use of land. We feel that if the comp plan amendment does not move forward, it's very likely that this portion of the property would remain undeveloped. We have critical areas ordinances in place, so we feel confident that critical areas will be protected through the development process. We just feel that this land could potentially sit vacant and underused if it's not rezoned. So, with that, staff makes a recommendation, as with the Planning Commission, that City Council approve the proposed rezone. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Hey, council members, are there any questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Right now, we have one person signed up, Mr. Ron Jepson. If you'd come forward.
My name is Ron Jepson, engineer. I'm representing the owner of the whole 20-acre parcel, and as you can see, it's a very limited development parcel, about maybe three acres of the 10, two and a half maybe, could be developed. However, it is landlocked, and access would have to come through the industrial site to get to it. So, I would like to recommend that you accept the Planning Commission. It worked the last time. And there has been no opposition to it, and I think what happens is, as was stated in the last situation, the line, being a single-family zoning line, trips setbacks on the industrial use that they have to comply with, and then it could be interpreted that any use on the single-family parcel that would support the industrial use may not be legitimate. And I'm referring to maybe stormwater dispersion, or a drain field, or anything like that that would support the industrial, could technically be said it's illegal in the single-family zone. So, with that, I would like to recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak to this matter? Go ahead. Just introduce your name, please, before you comment.
Hello, my name is Yoshi Revell. Thank you, members of the audience, members of staff, committee council, and Madam Mayor. I think I heard the word "underutilized." I'm sorry, but there are plants and animals that live on that piece of land, and we tend to steamroll over them, and we think that that's acceptable, basically because they can't come and speak at a city council meeting, and say, you know, we live in this place. And the more we neglect the needs of the plants and animals of this world, we start destroying the world that we live on, and eventually, it gets to us. That's what climate change is about. We're ignoring the fact that we're steamrolling our planet. Climate change is going to be nasty if we don't slow down. I thank you all for listening, and I wish you all health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak on this issue? Lawyer, just come forward and state your name and go ahead.
My name is Laura Roz, and I just want to say, why would you want to put pollution where there is nature? That just, it doesn't make any sense, and I just don't think we should put pollution where, I know we need jobs and things like that, but why pollute land that doesn't need to be polluted? And I don't think this should happen.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to come forward to speak to this? Oh, by the way, we do have some rules of decorum in here, and one of those is we don't boo, nor do we clap or cheer people. We try to kind of keep it neutral. We'll listen to what you have to say. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and speak on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring the public hearing to a close, bring her back to the City Council.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. This is a motion to approve the comprehensive plan amendment change and a rezone of a portion of property located within Area 20 from residential single to industrial planned. Any discussion of the motion? April?
So, I'm supportive of the project. I just have a couple of questions in regards to housing. So, we lose 15 units here, and on the last one, I think there was about seven units, it sounded like. So, we look at these individually, but there is a cumulative effect, and do we keep track of that? Because our comprehensive plan based our population projections on a lot of these properties that we knew were encumbered, so we, of course, put less property units toward those. So, at what point does something trip to let us know that over time, we have changed enough zoning, that we're now not going to be meeting our comprehensive plan goals?
If I might respond, a couple of things. First, we do a buildable lands analysis, which assesses all of the lands, takes out the critical areas, and gives us a number. But we know things like this do happen, so we put in a market factor that gives us a cushion of units that are usually 20% to 25% more than we typically would need, because that could represent both units like this that fall out when you do more detailed analysis, or other units that may not develop in the market. So, we always have surplus to allow for minor fluctuations. That being said, we keep close tabs on development patterns and actual development, and reassess the numbers frequently, because if we find ourselves having an incorrect assumption, we'd want to adjust it. So, in this case, I feel fairly confident we've got headroom, significant headroom at this point in time, since we just did that analysis for the recent comp plan adoption, and we will reassess probably within a year's time to see where we come up.
Terry?
Yeah, relating to what April was asking about, just as a point of history, Gina will remember it, but not, I don't, maybe no one that's right in here. When we first brought that area of Cordada into the city, a lot of it was zoned light industrial. We had some real battles in here about rezoning that light industrial property into housing property. So, there has been, we've lost a lot of light industrial property in that area that went towards housing. And so, when I saw that, I thought, well, this balances a little bit, plus these properties, just because the acreage says, you could, it says seven houses, or whatever. Given wetlands and accessibility, doesn't mean we're losing seven home sites, or 30 home sites, or whatever it is. There's a lot of it, you're not going to be able to develop into individual home sites anyway. So, I'll definitely, I think, approve this one.
Anyone else? Well, I would like to say that I really do appreciate the fact that this is being changed to allow for more industrial and commercial development. I really worry about us having a balanced approach to expanding, oh geez.
Hello?
Make sure you turn off your phone.
Yeah. Fine, fine.
Round of drinking yiscus for everybody. That'll do it. You're in trouble now, buddy.
So, I'd like to say that we need a balanced approach, and I sometimes worry that we get too much residential development, not always in the right places. This area is already great for light industrial development. Most of this property is encumbered, but I think there's a chance to aid in the commercial development in this area, and one of the reasons why I'm so keen on maximizing the utilization of land that's already within the city limits is I want to avoid sprawl. I want to avoid expanding our urban boundaries. I want to avoid low-density or any density development out in the areas that are outside the city limits. If we can stay within the city limits where our carbon footprint is lower, where our transportation impacts are lower, where travel distances are fewer, we are, you know, trying as best we can to reduce the impacts to the environment around us. I'm not saying this is environmentally friendly, but there are far less friendly ways we could develop, and I want to resist those, and so I will take the better path when given to me. So, that's one reason I'm supporting this comp plan and rezone change. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Okay. So, the motion before us is to approve the comprehensive plan change and a rezone in a portion of property located in Area 20. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That concludes our two public hearings. We will now go on to the 15-minute public comment period. We have several people signed up. It might take a little longer than 15 minutes, but I think we can get through this if everyone does a good job of trying to abide by the three-minute limit. We have a sign over here which indicates your three minutes. When you hear the bell go off, that actually means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments, so you can keep talking. The first name up here is Mr. Joseph McDonald, and then Joe McIntyre-Witt will be second. Joseph, would you like to come forward?
My name is Joseph McDonald, and you know I have a speech impediment. I would like to see the City Council candidates have an open forum and nationally be televised. I have a few questions I would like to ask, to be asked, but to the candidates, one of them being, do you believe in love, or do you believe in aid? I'm sure other people have their questions, too.
Excuse me, Joseph. We have a rule, a state law, actually, that does not allow this form to be used for campaigning or candidate issues. If you can reframe your questions as general issues to the public rather than as candidate questions, you can just go ahead.
Okay. I would just like an open forum.
An open forum on the issues. Thank you, sir. After that is Jill McIntyre-Witt, followed by Ben Larson and Gary Pedersen.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Jill McIntyre-Witt. I don't come here that often, but when I do, I I don't come here that often, but when I do, I want to ask you some very tough questions. I want to appreciate what you said, Michael, about thinking about the climate impacts, the decisions I've asked that years ago to put a carbon footprint on every decision the city council makes. So, I appreciate that you guys are looking into that. I'm here because of what happened last week. Our president wants to pull out, or said we're going to pull out of the Paris Agreement. I've been spending the last two years working on climate justice and made a field manual to help people urge governments to take bolder action on climate change. Because the Paris Agreement does not meet our current targets, to lower our carbon emissions to what the agreement says, 1.5 degrees Celsius. So, the targets are off, so we need to urge local governments to take stronger action. I appreciate today that you took a 7-0 vote to sign on to a letter saying that we support the Paris Agreement. However, I'm here to ask you to take bolder action. So, while I appreciate that, and it's very necessary, and we are a city that votes 7-0 to sign on to something like that, it's easy for us to do that. What seems to be hard for us is to put out a climate action plan. We've been working hard to revise it. It needs further revision. It's going to be coming out soon. I have been talking with the folks that work on that. I'm here to ask that we act on climate and put numbers to the actions that we can take as a city. There are cities across the country that have committed to 100% renewable energy at various years, say 2025, 2030, 2035, 2050. I want to ask the city to commit, make 100% commitment to doing so by 2030. And that would be actually putting targets into place to make that happen, as well as reporting back to the citizens that we're actually hitting those targets as we move forward post-announcement last week, and where we need to go moving forward. The bottom line is, we need to move forward faster. I'm asking the citizens of Bellingham, if you're watching tonight, to come out to the farmer's market this weekend. I volunteer with 350.org, and they've asked all the local city chapters to have an action on June 10th to urge that their cities act on climate. So, I'm asking people to come out to the farmer's market to sign on to support that we make targets, that we take action. I wanted to let you know, there are cities that have already hit 100% renewable energy right now, and there are cities that have committed to doing that. I don't see why we can't have Bellingham on the list of cities committing to that. I do want to mention, so Sierra Club is running a campaign. There are other ways to join in on this. We have the, oh, that 30 seconds went fast, really? Okay, well, the mayor's National Climate Action Agenda, look it up. And I would like to see if we can get a citizens' climate justice committee formed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Next up would be Ben Larson, followed by Gary Pedersen, and then Nancy Amol, Amoli? Amoli?
Hello, council members. My name is Ben Larson. I'm a member of the Bellingham Tenants Union, BTU. I would like to begin by thanking city council for meeting today to talk about housing and housing affordability in Bellingham. I'd also like to recognize and thank many of the community members who are here, who brought awareness to homelessness during the Peace Out protests this weekend as well. As you know, housing is a crucial issue for residents of Bellingham. The home is a wellspring of personhood. It is where identity takes root and blossoms. Whereas children, we imagine, play, and question. And as adolescents, we retreat and try. As we grow older, we hope to settle into a place to raise a family or pursue work. When we want to understand ourselves, we often begin by considering the home in which we were raised. Civic life, too, begins at home, allowing us to plant roots and take ownership over our community, participate in local politics, and reach out to neighbors in the spirit of solidarity and generosity. This makes it all the more important that the barriers to housing are lowered in Bellingham. Large sums paid in fees can be prohibitive to many would-be tenants and perpetuate homelessness in our city. Income discrimination makes affording shelter even more difficult for those receiving housing assistance, and our government's efforts to address homelessness less effective. Finally, education regarding renters' rights and responsibilities is extremely important for protecting the health, safety, and economic security of tenants in our city. I urge the city council to develop ordinances to address these issues. I thank you for your time and your continued efforts on housing and housing affordability in Bellingham.
Thank you, Ben. And next up is Gary Pedersen, followed by Nancy, I'm sorry, Amoli, perhaps, and then Galen Hertz.
Thank you. My name's Gary Pedersen. I have, I'm the one that passed this out to you earlier. I'll make this short and sweet. The first page, as you can see, is basically the landlord-tenant law. That's what I'm here to speak about. I'm happy that, earlier today, I was at the council board meeting, and they really were energetic in bringing that up and looking into doing ways to do things. There was a lot of good ideas that came up, and I'm looking forward to more things going on. I am a member of the Bellingham Tenants Union also. So, I want, the first page is pretty much self-explanatory. Basically, what it says, it's in a nutshell, is right now, tenants have a 20-day written notice over their heads, because there's nothing in the state law that says landlords can't do anything about it. They can just give you a notice and you're gone. The second page is facts. I'll start with the first one. This was from 2016. 41% of everybody's income is going to their housing. Should be below 28%. You all know that. According to Zillow, those are facts about Bellingham and Waukem County housing. And if you look at this third page, real quickly, you can see on item two, the average cost for disabled people and stuff, even on a single person at $900, how are they going to pay $1,500 a month for rent? You know, this is, these are things that are undisputed. The University of Washington came up with the studies showing 40% more people are living in their cars, increasing 10% homelessness. The third page is basically our tenant recourse. Alls I'm trying to ask is, why is it landlords only offer month-to-month? Why can't we get a three-month lease? It's not asking too much. They say, well, you can't do that. I've talked to council members in Everett, Seattle, all the way up the county, and I've looked into this. Basically, you can pass a resolution asking or demanding that if you are a landlord in the city, you have to offer a three-month lease to people. Another thing we'd like to see is that if you're going to evict somebody, you have to give a notice. As the state law reads now, they don't have to give you a notice. If Mayor Lindley likes my apartment, she just has to go to Michael, my landlord, say, I want Gary's apartment. He puts a 20-day notice on my door. I got to find someplace to live. I guarantee you, this isn't 1970, people, where we, back then, yes, we went to the apartments to get away from our parents to parties. Landlords were going to take our deposits. We expected that. This is the 2000s, where now we live in the apartments, and they're our homes. We need some security. Three months isn't asking much. If somebody is trashing the apartment, the landlord could get rid of them in three months' time. But for those of us that pay our rent on time, we'd like a little bit of security. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next up, Nancy, and if you could say your last name properly, that'd be great. Then followed by Galen, and then Peyton Akri, I'm going to say? Go ahead. The next person's Caitlin, and then Peyton. So, go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Nancy Amol, and I am currently homeless. I always pay my rent on time. I don't drink, smoke, party, or do drugs. I don't have a criminal record. The reason I am homeless is because property management company has decided they were going to remodel all the units, so I was given 20-day notice to get out. That was on October, um, excuse me, April 6th. I was able to get an additional month, but as of the 31st of May, I'm homeless and couch I can't be out on the street. I have various medical issues that would make it impossible for me to, like, be out on the street. The, trying, and I should make clear that I do have a housing voucher, housing choice voucher, otherwise known as Section 8. But trying to find apartment within the rental limits that are set forth, which for a one-bedroom apartment, is somewhere around $750 to $760 a month. Now, occasionally, there, I will find a listing for something underneath, under, within those limits, or below, but they won't take Section 8 because it's a voluntary program. I need an apartment where I don't have to share laundry facilities, because I'm a mean compromised, where either it has a washer and dryer, a washer and dryer hookup, or at least enough square footage where I could get some kind of portable washer to wash my And I've been looking solidly now for two months. Haven't found anything. It just, for these prices, you know, $750, $760, they don't exist. And if they do, they don't take housing. So, it's basically legalized discrimination against people who withhold housing vouchers. And there are a few cities, Seattle, Toquilla, I believe, Bellevue, where they have made it illegal to discriminate against people with housing vouchers if a landlord's apartment falls within the rental limits that's covered by a voucher. And it's pretty obvious to me that I'm not alone. There were other people in the building that were also disabled and kicked out, that there needs to be something. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Galen, next, followed by Peyton Akri, I'm going to say, and then Russ Sepienza.
Good evening, council. My name is Galen Hertz, and I'm the Western Associated Students Local Issues Coordinator. I'd like to first express my respect and support for the organizers of Peace Out, and I'd also like to thank the council and the mayor for their work on the low-barrier shelter and the work sessions on renter barriers. I would like to speak to you all today about how our city's housing affordability challenge is interlinked with the climate crisis, as are the solutions. This past Thursday, when I should have been studying for finals, I was watching the world's reaction to President Trump's decision to withdraw from the Paris Agreement. Trump has betrayed future generations and our planet. I was glad to see that many elected leaders, such as our governor, and over 180 mayors have pledged to continue to follow the Paris Accord. Our city's own climate champion, Pinky Vargas, has brought forward a motion to do the same. But what do these pledges mean when it comes to concrete policy and action in our city? Our city's climate action plan states roughly 42% of our emissions come from transportation, and 48% come from buildings, half-residential and half-commercial. To reduce emissions, we need dense, bike-and-walkable, mixed-income neighborhoods served by transit. It's no secret that Bellingham has skyrocketing home values and rents. More of our neighbors are experiencing homelessness, and more working-class residents are being pushed out to areas with more affordable housing, like Ferndale and Blaine. These residents then commute farther for work, driving up carbon emissions. If we reject urban sprawl because we value farmland, mountain biking at Galbraith, and the natural beauty of our surroundings, we must allow for density. There is growing demand among my generation, young families, and seniors for missing-middle housing, such as row houses, cottage housing, and mother-in-law units. These homes are more affordable, allow more families to live near parks and schools, and are more energy-efficient. The EPA concluded in a 2011 report titled "Location Efficiency in Housing Type: Boiling It Down to BTUs." Housing type is a very significant, and this is quote, "Housing type is a very significant determinant of energy consumption. Fairly substantial differences are seen in detached versus attached homes. But the most striking difference is the variation in energy use between single-family detached homes and multifamily homes, due to the inherent efficiencies from more compact size and shared walls among units." I hope you all will support well-designed infill in every neighborhood to allow for dense, bike-walkable, economically diverse neighborhoods served by transit. Our community has been a leader on climate issues, especially when it comes to saying no to fossil fuel projects. Now, more than ever, I hope the community is ready to say yes for solutions to housing affordability and a low-carbon city. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. Peyton is next, followed by Russ Sepienza, and then Laura Ross.
Hi, my name is Peyton Akri, and I am just a student and resident here in Bellingham. And recently, I did a project on homelessness here, and I found some evidence. But what I was wondering is, what Bellingham is doing to help those who are homeless get into housing that is more permanent and not just temporary help? So, I was wondering if, how Bellingham is using, if they thought about using rapid rehousing, which is quickly moves homeless people into permanent housing by providing temporary rent, subsidies, and housing-focused case management, while the household does not have to leave when services end. Also, transitional housing with, provides housing for no longer than 24 months, and is designed to move people experiencing homelessness into permanent housing. Now, rehousing for beds and slots, I've seen 12,359 beds for that, and the cost per day would be $26, which is a pretty low cost. And then, for a successful exit, would be $4,000. As well as for transitional housing, it's a little bit more with 7,000 beds, and the cost per day would be $45, and a cost for successful exit would be $15,000. So, that is all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peyton. Russ is next, followed by Laura Ross, and then Michael Zick.
Good evening, council members. My name is Russ Sepienza, and I've worked as a, what was called a peer advocate, and then a peer counselor at Rainbow Recovery Center, and for a long time. And throughout my career, I have noticed so many people who are trying desperately to get into housing, but have not been able to procure it, primarily because the rents are too high, many folks have criminal records, and many of them cannot even afford the application And earlier, one of your speakers mentioned that sometimes it takes almost half the person's entire income just to pay for the rent. I find that unacceptable. And, you know, I'm on disability myself, and I feel that it's important for all of us to understand that once a certain group of people, that is, people with mental health issues or developmental issues, if they don't get housing, what does that mean for the rest of us? And I think a lot of you folks in the audience will hopefully ask that question as well. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Laura Ross is next, followed by Michael Zick, and then Rick Carroll.
Hi, my name is Laura Ross, and I just want to let you know that I'm homeless because of domestic violence. This I want to hand to you guys. This is wishes from the homeless, and what we need.
Thank you.
I don't think I have enough time for my three minutes. Hi, my name is Laura Ross. I started Peace Out a year ago, because we all need a home. Meetings are popping up all over with people wanting to help with the homeless. But to actually do, to set out to do something, to help someone, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
But to actually do what you set out to do, to help someone that is less fortunate than yourself, to go out of your way for someone whom is in need, to make the difference, to change a person's life for the better, well, that's why I've asked all of us to come together this weekend, and for the turnout this year. I've had, I had 14 more tents than I did last year. And my gratitude to the people of Bellingham that supplied the food and water and stuff for Peace Out, because we all need a home, thanks, because we all have feelings. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Laura. Next up is Michael Zick, followed by Rick Carroll, and then Jay Griffin, please.
Hello, the city council. Hello, the mayor, people of Bellingham. I just want to say, I love this town. I don't consider myself homeless. I don't consider myself a transient. I consider myself without shelter. Bellingham is my home. I've lived here almost my entire life. There's various things with the housing market that make it difficult for me, which I'm on SSI, Section 8, and, you know, Tony Castle with the housing authorities, having them lottery, maybe possible 2,000 more vouchers are going to be distributed when the market's already flooded with ones that can't be used. I'm currently at the drop-in center. There's various issues going on there that, you know, make it difficult to be a stable place for someone in our, my position, anyway. You know, we talk about the trash and... You know, we talk about the trash and the litter and the unsanitary bathroom, going in the creek and the watersheds and stuff. You know, and I see that Maritime Heritage Park, it's the only bathroom in Lockton County where it's locked up, and we are the homeless community that we don't have access to it. You know, you can go to Lake Patton, you can take a shower, you can go at any other park run by the Parks and Recreation Department in Lockton County, and the bathrooms are open all day until the sun goes down. Maritime Heritage Park is the only one that's locked and unavailable to us. You know, and there's the cameras and the other things that make it uncomfortable. You know, I know that there are homeless problems, and, you know, people do things in the bathrooms they shouldn't be, but, you know, when you go in the bush and urinate on a tree, you know, you may get a charge that you may not like, that has nothing to do with urinating in public. A dog has more rights than a homeless person, is the way I see it right now. So I just wanted to say that piece, but I appreciate the efforts being taken place. And I hope that, you know, a land, or a park, or a space for the homeless community can be set aside, just like we did here today. You know, we clean up after ourselves, you know, we're respectful of the land, we're respectful of the people around us. It's just a matter of having a place to pitch a tent would even be better than some of the situations that we have to deal with at places like the drop-in center, or the mission, or the YMCA, or church floor, or sending crews to scout out litter and pick up trash all over the community when it can be done at one place in one location. It'd be a lot more economical, feasible than hunting all over the place for us. That's all I wanted to say, but thank you. I know you're working on it.
Thank you, Michael. Up next is Rick Carroll, followed by Jade Griffin, and then Rihanna Johnston.
It's hard to explain about us homeless people. We're everywhere in every city. We all have problems, different problems, and it's like nobody can hear us because we don't actually talk about it to anybody because of, it's just a quiet thing about us homeless people. And my main concern in Bellingham is we're not very picky people, but I don't know who runs the mission or the drop-in center. I've been to the Health Department and the City Hall and the mission, and I don't know how to help us homeless people. I've heard of several people get heartburn from the food that we eat. I'm not saying we're complaining on our food. I guess I kind of am, but I wish things could be better for us here in Bellingham, and I know it can be if somebody could help us. And I know it's the money thing, but we need more help here in Bellingham. And I appreciate it if somebody could stand up for us a little better on how we're being treated. The drop-in center, disabled people, it's hard for us to get up off the floor where we sleep. And if there's something we could do about it as homeless people, you know, it's hard for us to ask for help, you know, but if there's, I don't know how other cities work, but I wish our cities could work a little better for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick. Jade, you're up next, followed by Rihanna Johnston, then April McCabe.
I'm Jade, and just a couple of things I wanted to ask about was, you know, like everybody else, you know, something to be done about the housing situation as far as affordability, as well as the fact that public rations are really hard to come by for the transgender community. A lot of places won't let us use ones where we feel comfortable, so we don't use them at all, and it ends up causing us health problems, because we have to wait until we can find one we can use. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Jade. Rihanna Johnston is next, followed by April McCabe, and then the last person to speak will be Yoshi again.
Hi, my name is Rihanna Johnston. I'm an organizer for the Bellingham Tenants Union. I'd first like to just express support and thanks to all the folks that have been doing the Peace Out. I think it's really important, and it's super great that you're drawing attention to these issues. I'd also like to thank the city council for your efforts in addressing housing and housing affordability issues. I was at the working group this morning, and I really appreciated comments that were made and your effort to kind of take all perspectives into account and really start addressing these issues. BTU and I personally strongly support preventing source-of-income discrimination. We think that's a really big step forward. We also support reducing move-in fee barriers, such as, I think, was mentioned earlier today, repeated application fees when you're applying for housing, and then just altogether high amounts of initial upfront fees that you have to pay before you can even get into your hopeful rental unit. And then also just increasing tenant access to basic tenant rights information. We've spoken about this before, but providing tenants on move-in with a basic packet of information about both their rights and their responsibilities, I think will protect both tenants and landlords in the long term, and that's an important step forward for our community. Oh, and also including voter rights information as well. Tenants should have access to that information. We're important members of the community in all other ways, and having access to our voting rights is also very important. But yeah, so thank you for your efforts on these issues, and we look forward to continuing to working on them with you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Rihanna, followed by April McCabe, and then Yoshi will be last to speak.
Hi, my name is April McCabe. I am a housing case manager at Opportunity Council. I specifically work with women and children that are survivors of domestic violence. Currently, I have quite a few clients that have the privilege of holding a voucher, Section 8 Choice voucher, but it has been so hard to walk with them and support them in trying to find housing when there is none, when so many landlords and property managers just don't even let them tell them their background or who they are, and simply say, no housing These, I've seen already a few families that I've worked with get so far, reach a stable spot, maybe gain part-time employment, make huge leaps, but then have lost their housing voucher because of that 90-day limit. I hope moving forward that you all will be supporting banning income discrimination, because that is definitely a huge, huge barrier, and though certainly not the solution to ending homelessness, it is certainly a good step. So thank you for your support and listening, and also for everyone's support in the Peace Out as well.
Okay, thank you. And I think up next is April, or that was April. Okay, so Yoshi.
My name is Yoshi Ravel. Thank you, members of the audience and staff, members of the city council, madam mayor, people of Bellingham. I've mentioned it here before, but it's worth repeating, as long as there's one homeless person, we're all homeless. We're all homeless right now. We live in big, huge houses, and we think we have a home. We don't. We have a prison. We go to our homes and we hide there. We hide from the problems of the world. We hide from the problems of the homeless. We have our prison where we think we're safe. We're not. As long as there is one homeless person, we're all homeless, because we're afraid up here, because we're not living from our hearts. If we don't live from our hearts, we're all homeless. That's true all around the world. We chase the wrong things. It's a thing called a money drunk. We think money's going to solve our problems, and we get drunk on it. Money is not going to solve our problems. If we don't live from our hearts, we're all lost. We own nothing, absolutely nothing. To the extent that we think we own anything, we're prisoners. We are prisoners in the things that we own. This is all a gift. We own none of it. In the messianic age, there will be no such thing as money, and we know such thing as ownership. We will all understand that this is a gift, and we will serve each other continually. There will be no such thing as need, because we will be serving each other the way we are made to serve each other gratefully, and grateful for this gift that we have. I thank you all for allowing me to speak, and I wish you all the well-being. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings to an end our 15-minute public comment period. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Oh, do we have more time? Okay, go ahead, sir. No, no, we're a little beyond our lama, but go for it.
Sorry about that.
Okay, go ahead and state your name, please, though.
Brad Miller here with, ended 3229 North Shore Road. Thank you again, mayors of the council, and Mayor Linville and others, for the chance to talk tonight. I don't want to diminish one bit of what was said before me, but I did bring, I want to bring something to your attention and ask a question or two. I received a piece of mail over the weekend from the Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District inviting me to a meeting on the 20th of June, where they were going to expand on and report on their feasibility study to extend water to the entire end of North Shore Road and consolidate smaller water districts. I just wondered if, how many of you might be aware of that, and I'll just continue to ask a question in a different way. One of the things extrapolated in the report that I saw was that they're planning by the consolidation of smaller water districts to be able to serve a maximum 280-some homes, and then an additional 500-some homes in the area from those water districts to the end of North Shore Road. That's about just under 800 new residential units that they are planning for by these plans, and I just would like to see if you have a show of hands or something, how many of you might have been aware that that process was going on, or the district was contemplating that kind of project.
Yeah, sure. The public comment period, we have a rule, we listen, we don't comment.
Okay.
But if you would please email us, you can email the entire city council at ccmail@cob.org.
Okay.
I think we'd be happy to give you a reply that way.
Wonderful. Okay, good. Thank you. Keep it brief. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so now we'll go into our regular meeting, which has, consists of reports from our standing committees. This morning, the Planning Committee met, and its chairperson is Gene Knudsen.
Thank you very much, Michael. This morning, we had a council committee work session on residential barrier concerns, Part II. This morning, with me on the committee was Dan Hamill and April Barker. Also this morning, we had Mayor Linville, we had Rick Sepler from Planning, we had Kurt Nabafeld from Planning, we had Brian Heinrich from the mayor's office. We heard from a few landlords today. We heard from Phyllis McKee, who's a landlord and a property owner here in Bellingham. We heard from Doug White, the owner of Windermere, who has a lot of rental units here in Bellingham. And we also heard from Adriana Hulkenberger, I'm probably butchering up her last name. She is the Opportunity Council Center for the Homeless. We had a great discussion. We talked about income discrimination, we talked about move-in fees, tenants' rights, responsibilities, and putting that into one packet. We had a great discussion. Our next work session's going to be talking about, one of the property owners today talked about the hurdles they have with insurance, so we're going to have somebody from that industry come and talk to us next time, and we're also going to have a lot of data from what other cities are doing on this topic, from Mark Gardner. April or Dan, is there any other thing that you want to bring up?
No, I think we had a good discussion, a pretty robust discussion today. At some point, I would like to talk with nonprofit housing developers like Colson CLT, Mercy Housing, Habitat for Humanity, but I know that this is an ongoing process.
Yep, it's ongoing. Okay, end of committee. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you very much. Our next committee to meet this afternoon at 1 o'clock was Public Works and Public Safety, and that's chaired by Councilor Terry Mortimer.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item before us today. That was a noise variance request from the Washington State Department of Transportation, or Wash, ah, for I-5 cable barrier upgrade project. The Washington State Department of Transportation is requesting 12 non-consecutive nights of variance from the requirements of the city's noise ordinance for a safety project on Interstate I-5. The noise variance is requested to allow Wash dot contractors to work nights on I-5 within the jurisdiction of the city of Bellingham between the inclusive dates of October 1st, 2017, and April 30th, 2018. The project encompasses two sections from Bellingham, Section 8 approximately Donovan Avenue to Lakeway Drive, and Section 9 approximately Sunset Drive to Bakerview Road. Jade Dry, Wash dot Assistant Regional Administrator for our region, was in attendance for the meeting for the council. This noise ordinance, they had indicated, isn't going to be typical noise like grinding or anything. They're going to put in areas where you've got three wire guide protective guards, they're going to increase that for strength in the center areas. So the committee recommended approval, and I so moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion before us to approve a noise variance requested by the Washington Department of Transportation for their project for upgrading the cable barriers. Any further discussion? All those in favor of granting the variance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
End of committee.
Entering the room. Thank you. We need to next go on to the Finance and Personnel Committee. Councilmember Roxanne Murphy is the chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two agenda items. The first was an ordinance amending the 2017-2018 budget, recognizing property tax revenues in the Greenways Fund, appropriating apportion for capital maintenance, and increasing ending reserves. So basically what happened is voters kindly passed the Greenways levy in our community, but that happened after we had submitted our city's budget. So what we're doing right now is we approved, we unanimously supported the appropriation of funding, and this will go on to help with different capital improvement projects throughout our park system. So the community unanimously recommended support, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion before us to amend the budget to realize the revenues from the Greenways Fund, in particular to have to do with our increased maintenance program. Any further discussion on this budget amendment? All those in favor of passing the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That also passes unanimously. Thank you.
The second item was a 2017 financial report. Things are going quite well. I encourage people to go back and look at the presentation that happened earlier this afternoon to hear some of this good and sometimes static news. End of committee.
Thank you very much. The next committee that met was Parks and Recreation. April Barker is the chair of that committee.
We had one item for committee today. Let's see, I was joined by Councilmember Pinky and Roxanne. It was approval of the name of the new park on Wacom Waterway. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm just kidding. That's just, just.
Vargas and Murphy, Councilmember Vargas and Murphy. So it was approval of the name of the new park on the Wacom Waterway. The following, it's a public process detailed in the attached policy, so you can read that if you'd like to go back, and you can also watch the small discussion that we had. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommends the name Waypoint Park and Bay Hart Park to council for consideration for the naming of the new waterfront park, which has temporarily been referred to as Wacom Waterway Park. City staff and the mayor recommended the name Waypoint. This is also the name of the artist, the name of the acid ball that was given by the artist, which will be a central feature of the park. One of the meaning for Waypoint, for those of you that don't know, is a stopping place on a journey, and it seems very appropriate for Bellingham and for the park. So we had unanimous recommendation for council to approve, and I so moved.
Second. We have a motion to approve the new name for the park on the Wacom Waterway, to call it Waypoint Park. Is there any further discussion? Some decisions are bigger than others.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is going to last. All those in favor of approving the name change signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got a new park. Now, if you're scared, what to call the Cordada parks, plural. Thank you. The next committee, the final committee is the committee of the whole. We had four items before us. The first one was site selection criteria for potential locations for a low-barrier homeless shelter and day center to be operated by the Lighthouse Mission Ministries. The city has been working cooperatively with the Lighthouse Mission Ministries to identify potential sites that could accommodate an easy access shelter to serve the community. The mission has identified operational criteria that frame their willingness to participate. Additionally, staff have also identified several regulatory and policy criteria that help to, that need to be met to establish the potential new location. I'm going to turn the page, approximately 120. There was a list of seven location criteria and then some further site requirements and building requirements. The discussion this afternoon from the staff and the mayor indicated that these criteria are not necessarily all equally weighted or all equally set in stone. They're the beginning point to identify a property that works well with our partner, which at this point is our only partner who stepped up to do independent fundraising for a low-barrier shelter. I believe the plan is basically to try to make this work and realizing that those criteria and our plans may need to change, but right now, we've identified tentatively a general radius around the current facilities, which would allow the Lighthouse Mission to realize some operational cost savings if they operate another facility, which is nearby their current facility. I hope that's a fair characterization. Is there any comments, Kelly or council?
No, that sounds, that was what it was.
So that was for information only. Those efforts are ongoing. The next item was a discussion of the inter-local jail facility finance and use agreement. This is an agreement that describes the financial commitments, including the use of sales tax and cost allocations for each participating jurisdiction in the construction and the operating of the new county jail. This JFFUA also describes the uses of the proposed facility, as well as certain operational aspects of the existing facility. Last Tuesday, May 30th, the Watcom County Council affirmed the size at 440 beds, plus or minus three for the main jail. This afternoon, we discussed it, and there was a motion to table voting on this action until after the county had had their hearing, which is scheduled for next week. The city attorney wanted us to clarify the motion to make, to indicate exactly when it would come back. Would it be after the hearing, just the very next meeting that we have after the hearing, or after the council's next opportunity to act?
I'm not sure. All I know is af, after that, so when we have an opportunity at our meeting to be able to act on it, yeah, so it would be at least the meeting after that.
Councilor Hamill?
Can you just, can you clarify the last part of your statement?
Sure. So normally, when you table something, there has to be a trigger to bring it off of the table. And the motion this afternoon had to do with waiting till after the county had had their hearing, but that could mean that our very next meeting, which might be before the county had a chance to act. I think the city attorney wanted us to clarify exactly when that would come back to be put on our agenda. Gene?
It's my understanding that they're going to have a hearing on the 13th and vote that night, so our next meeting is the 19th. So I don't know why we wouldn't take action after we hear what they do.
Okay, your understanding is they will be voting that night?
I think that would be fine, to bring it back then, and we can decide if we want to take action or not. Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Dan?
I have no disagree, but I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ruffato, did you think the motion is now adequately clarified? So it sounds like we'd bring it back at our next meeting following the hearing and be put on the committee of the whole.
Yeah, in terms of process, yes. There is still an underlying question. I don't know that the county council is necessarily going to take another vote. I don't know that they're, I don't know that they are.
That's what I've been told. I'm just saying that.
Okay. Pinky and then April?
I just had a quick question about what the timeline was, that is, when we have to, the latest, to pass it back to the county. Just curious on that timeline.
That's end of July.
I know we talked about that this morning.
The county has to act at the, their meeting on July 25th to put it on the ballot. My guess is they'd like to hear before that. They would have probably liked to have heard today.
Yes.
April?
Oh, I, I don't see why we could, I agree, bring it back on the 19th and we'll make, make a decision on what we want to do there. So we'll leave a placeholder for it, and since I voted yes for that, I'm okay with that.
On the 19th?
Yeah.
Okay, rather than a placeholder, I would just ask the staff to go ahead and put an agenda item to bring forward the jail facility use agreement on the 19th for committee of the whole. Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Brian has more information about the current jail.
Brian Heinrich, mayor's office. I did want to follow up with a number of questions from Councilmember Barker. One of those was the timeline for the current facility remodels, and Watcom County is, has engaged with a contractor, I think it's an architect as well, right now, and they expect to start those repairs this fall. And as a reminder, that will result in limited use of the existing facility as well, as they remodel that, the current facility.
So that's to remodel it while it can stay the way it is, because it's going to be about five years if, if we do put something on the ballot.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm assuming then we won't just leave that building like that whenever we have, if we choose to make a new facility. There's going to be more process that needs to be done to that building, which was worked into this.
It'll ultimately be demolished.
Okay. And they're going to pay for that?
They're going to pay for 78% of that demolition. So the city has agreed to pay for $158,000 of the estimated $1 million demolition cost.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion on the jail facility use agreement? Yeah, no, there's, the jail's a very complicated process. Moving on, the next item was entitled Options for Inquiries, Reports, and Complaints. The title, I don't think quite conveys everything that we're talking about. It was a broad-ranging discussion that had to do with mechanisms for public feedback. Some of those might be complaints or reports about potential misconduct or just complaints about city behavior, and the idea is that we need to provide an open door for people, especially for underrepresented or disadvantaged communities who may not normally feel comfortable coming forward to the city with, with complaints with regard to any action by a city employee. Specific options were discussed this afternoon, including the Almuzban model, also the idea to contract with Third Party Dispute Resolution Service. This afternoon was a motion by Councilmember Mortimer to request the administration to bring forward some proposals and ideas for the form that that might take, potentially in the form of a pilot program to create that, that, that front door, that welcoming front door for people to complain. Is that an accurate description? It was a rather long motion.
Yeah.
And then in addition, there was further discussion on a, on a larger range of issues with a guard to how we engage and are open to underrepresented communities and maybe put our equity commitments, which are in words, into actions. I think that was an expressed concern. And then the final action for the committee was a public, had to do with Public Works, and had to do with our 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Program. It's a six-year program on transportation planning. We revise annually. The six-year TIP is adopted annually to plan for and program public funding towards capital improvements for Bellingham's multimodal transportation network. State law requires we do this before July 1st of every year. The draft TIP was based on both public staff recommendations and also was presented to the Transportation Commission, which recommended approval on May 9th. We held a public hearing on the TIP on May 22nd, and this afternoon, we had a council committee meeting to consider any further changes. There were none. We recommended to approve the resolution adopting the TIP and ISO move. Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving the 2018-2023 Transportation Improvement Program. Is there any discussion or comments on this item? Gene?
Just a comment. I have to thank Ted and Chris Como and your staff for what you've done over the years on this. This used to be equivalent to having four wisdom teeth pulled without any Novocain years ago, and it were, I'm not kidding. It was really bad. I mean, we had nights when we were in here till 12, 1 o'clock, and it got delayed and delayed and delayed and delayed. It was just absolutely horrible. So I want to thank you and your staff for what you've done over the years, and it's really just the professionalism of what you people do and how that's laid out. So not only we understand it, but more than us, the people who stand on the other side of the podium and talk to us, they have not said a word this year about our six-year street plan, other than a couple of comments. So it, it reflects well on you and the mayor and the staff and everybody, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the resolution adopting the TIP signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. There are no minutes for approval at this point, so we'll move on to old and new business. Under new business, we did talk about the president's actions on the Paris Agreement, and there was a recommendation this afternoon. Councilmember Vargas, would you like to talk about that?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as everyone is aware, the president did choose to pull out of the Paris Climate Accord, but the city of Bellingham is a city committed to reducing our carbon footprint and our emissions. And we have an opportunity to join other cities and states to say that we are still in, and I'm going to make a motion that we join on to the proposal by the environment team at Bloomberg Philanthropies. It is an open letter to the international community, and the parties are agreeing to join forces for the first time to declare that we will continue to support the climate action to meet the Paris Agreement, and then the rest of the, the document is in front of you. So I move, oh, and by the way, sidebar of that, the mayor has already signed on to the mayor's climate agreements with the other cities across the nation, so thank you very much for that, mayor. And I'm asking the city council, I'm moving that we propose, that we sign on to the environment team at Bloomberg Philanthropies. We are still in documents.
Second. We have a motion before us to join in the open letter to the international community and parties on the Paris Agreement. Peter, procedurally, are we okay just approving this without reading this into the record? It will be included in the record or published when we sign it?
I don't think it needs to be read into the record.
Okay, nice, thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion on this? Okay, I guess we're good then. All those in favor of approving our signature to the open letter signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Anything else under old and new business right now? Roxanne?
Going to repeat what I said this afternoon. So petition gather, gatherers, our gathering signature is to try to get an initiative on the Washington State ballot that would allow schools and also businesses to ban transgender people from using bathrooms. And so on June 19th, we will hold a public hearing, and you can voice support, opposition, or otherwise to a resolution that will be proposed that will ask people to please decline to sign that initiative. So get, please help get the word out and get people here in case anybody wants to provide testimony on that, June 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items under old and new business? April?
So I'll just give a follow-up that, yes, our open, our town hall is going to be June 13th. For those that aren't able to attend or are going to attend and want to hear the follow-up, because in that public comment time, we do not respond, try to give people opportunity to let us know how they're feeling. We have allowed for 30 minutes in our meeting, June 19th. It's a daytime meeting in committee of the whole, where we'll be framing kind of all of what we heard and then hopefully giving some direction on where we'd like to go after what we've heard from the community. The very beginning is a panel discussion, and you have an opportunity to send in specific questions of what you'd like to hear them say, their abroad, a bit, a broad array of people, different people in the community, well, outside the community and within the community. So if you do have questions that you would like to hear what a panel, how they might answer them, please go ahead and send them to, you can send them through email, you can call them in, or you can do it via social media on Facebook. We need those by the 9th if possible.
April, can you tell us a little about the kinds of panels they're going to be, just kind of generally speaking, what their background or representing or perspectives?
Yeah, you might be able to. We have somebody, Jeff Thomas, coming from the Department of Commerce to kind of give us a state, what is it?
Ted Keller.
Oh, was it Jeff Thomas? Sorry, oh, sorry, that was, that was an old employee.
I thought he was coming back.
Still have a little, it's going to be buried in there forever. Yes, thank you. They weren't fond memories I had, so I'm quite happy with Rick. He's going to give us kind of, hopefully, a state, state of housing for Washington State, because as we know, these are issues that a lot of people up and down the I-5 corridor are having. Rick will be there. He's the Department of Planning and Community Development current director, and he'll be giving us a bit of an overview of the state of housing in Bellingham. And then we also have Rose from Sustainable Connections. That's going to give us a little bit of, like, what are some innovative solutions from the private sector and how it's looking on that end. And then our last one was Greg Winter. He's the current director of the Opportunity Council to let us know how the housing levy that we've met our goals, but to explain that, and then that that's expiring and some other things that are around that. So, that's it. Did I do it? Okay.
Other than, just to add, the location's going to be at Bellingham High School in the auditorium. Door's at 6:00, so, and then the programming starts at 6:30. So if you want to get there and provide public comment, I'd get there at 6:00, you can, so you can sign up, and there's ample parking, plenty, plenty of parking.
And the program will be recorded for broadcast on BTV 10. Unfortunately, for technical reasons, we won't be live broadcasting that event, but we will be rebroadcasting that event. Anything else under old and new business? Okay, well, I'll move on then to report out our executive session. We had three items under the executive session. The first is litigation matter, Haskell Corporation versus the city of Bellingham. Staff provided information to the council on a litigation matter. It was for information discussion only, no action was taken. The next item was potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter. It also was for potential, for information and discussion, and no action was taken. And the third item is exactly the same. It was a potential litigation. Staff provided information on potential litigation matter. It was for information and discussion only, no action was taken on that item. I believe that bring, do we have any final ordinances? We have, okay, we have, how many? One? Oh, wait a minute. Mayor's report, mayor's report.
Oh, how soon we forget.
I'm sorry.
We have no planning director, we have no mayor.
But other than that, we're still.
Let's, let's just go to the mayor's report.
This is going to be very short, so that's good. First of all, thank you, Pinky, for mentioning that I signed on to that. Jill McIntyre-Witt just told me that there's a different thing that I should sign on to, so she's going to send me the information. I said, good. And Michael and I have the same list of the things the city has been doing to reduce emissions, but one of the things that he didn't mention is something that is just, April talks about equity as a day-to-day policy. Well, when we look at waterfront redevelopment and the contaminated sites and things, we're looking at the effects of seawater rise on, or sea level rise. So that's built into the factors that the, that the planning department uses when they're looking at the redevelopment in areas like that that are on the shore. So we just do stuff like that, that maybe most people wouldn't even know about, but our staff's on top of it. So I just thought I'd mention that. Also, I had said something earlier in the day, but the, but I'm going to mention it again because it is very important to the city, and that is that Sheriff Elfo is looking, has requested from Yakima an agreement, a contract like we have, in order to maintain our pre-trial people in the jail better. And I'm very grateful for that. I thanked him personally, and I think that will help, I know, our staff in the management of who was going there and who wasn't. That means that county inmates would also be eligible to go to Yakima, which I believe is much more appropriate than just the, the people that haven't been convicted of a, of a crime yet. So I also have two reappointments, and it doesn't say right here whether you have to approve them or not.
Second, I think we do have to.
I think, I was going to say Public Facilities District. I think you do, too. So I am reappointing Daniel Lerner and David Warren to the Bellingham-Watcom Public Facilities District Board.
Approved. Second. We have a motion before us to reappoint Daniel Lerner and David Warren to the Bellingham-Watcom Public Facilities District. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they're reappointed. Anything else, Kelly?
I looked through the comments that Laura left for us, and I went to give her the box back, because I think it's kind of special that we have comments from people that are really being affected by this issue, and she'd already left, so I'll make sure that she gets her box. And they're probably more than anyone wants me to sit and read right now. I was thinking about reading them after you left, and instead, I think I'll see if our intern can enter them into our website or, or Facebook account, or one of those things, so that there'll be a record of them, and people can look and see the different things that were requested. Most of these are things that I'm sure the council already knows, but a lot about washing and storage, and, and a lot of thank yous also to the city for the work that we're all doing to, to try to address the problem. So that was very nice. And I hope Laura's okay. I didn't realize what was happening behind me, but, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's an emotional issue, especially for those affected most directly by it. And you're right about climate change. It was only a partial list. I know Pinky recently was exploring district energy for the Watcom waterfront. That wasn't mentioned. There's numerous things the city's involved in. Consent agenda.
Move through.
Again.
We have a motion before us to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.